Six o'clock. Six o'clock, I will call as meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, liberty, justice for all.
Amy?
Andy?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Truax?
And now we have public input. Like to speak? Planning Commission?
Yeah, we bought. It's two thousand sixteen. I was waiting pretty much for time, just gonna put a single wide trailer on it. Since then, you guys kind of changed the rules or whatever. He put one on his lot. Just kind of maybe seeing if there's any kind of variance or whatever. Just a single wide trailer on the property. That's why he's here today. So zoning it states, and they changed this in two thousand twenty, that the minimum size for it has to be twenty-four feet.
Say that again? It has to be twenty-four feet?
The gable end of the lawn. No, me neither, but that's what it says. And that was changed, so two thousand sixteen, it was allowed, and then they changed in sixteen, and adopted, or thirteen, I can't remember which it was, and adopted what they had in two thousand twenty, and then they changed it in two thousand twenty to that ruling.
Have you seen the property?
I know where the property is, I haven't seen his actual lot, no. We just talked a little bit maybe a week or two ago.
Do you have any recommendations? Or do you not? Well.
I guess I took that. I own two lots, I don't know, there might be lots. I own two of them. So. So, me and him, it's easy on.
Walk me through this like I don't understand, because I really don't.
He just wants a single wide mobile. We bought the front.
It's the same time.
Same time, thinking.
See, it's only about fourteen feet wide.
Four foot.
It seems to me verbiage. It's a poor mobile home. We haven't been, I don't check.
We did, they changed the zoning, that's my understanding.
Okay, so I don't allow them anymore, and that's why they did that. We didn't want anymore.
That's right.
That's why we did it.
That is to my understanding, um, I'm not, I don't have an issue with it myself, but based on location after, that he had purchased the property prior to being changed.
I happen to agree. I don't see why we wouldn't allow them to do this, but we just need to send them through the right channels here.
Well, good question.
We need to hear this, because if this was what the request was when it was written, when it was planned, and.
Right. Well, having just gone over part of the enabling, it was either in the Enabling Act or the Zoning Act, once ordinances are changed, you have to follow the new word.
Correct.
But, you know, having said that, and considering that this is public comment and not an agenda item, how, question, how, how soon are you looking to do this, like?
Um, well.
If you could?
I was wanting to do this before I go back to Florida, but, um, because that's where I live. I'm retired military.
Okay.
Um, and I was pretty much waiting to retire to do this, you know, and I'm from here. Um, so I was kind of wanting to do it between, like, if the weather gets too bad, it probably wouldn't be feasible, but maybe springtime?
Okay. Springtime gives us a lot more time to put this on.
Right.
Put this on the agenda for something to consider. Mike, can?
We have his contact information and address and stuff?
I do not. They filled out, they didn't fill anything out the day they came in, they just, we just talked. They were asking questions, so this was probably two Wednesdays ago.
I would think this would fall under a variance request, correct?
Yeah.
And, you know. I told them to go up here at least ask first and.
Sure.
Before they wasted their time and money.
I mean, my, my feeling, not just about our ordinances, but rules in general, is I hate rules. It should be guidelines, and there are always going to be exceptions, which is not to say I'm in favor or not in favor of your request, but I, I think it should be put through channels, and I think, you know, filling out a variance request, going, going through the proper steps, and then we can schedule it for, if you're around in early December.
On the second.
Well, we, we are also, you don't need to stick around, if you give us contact information.
You're gonna be up here, aren't you? Yeah. Why don't you represent them?
Sure.
You come in and represent them. He can do that.
And then. I'm also gonna be suggesting that we have some additional meetings rather than just our monthly meeting, and we could squeeze that in, because I don't, I, once the application is in and we have all the things in front of us, I don't think it's gonna be a long, long agenda item to say thumbs up, thumbs down on it.
Right.
Do you have time to come in on Wednesday, and we can set up the paperwork?
This Wednesday, or the day after tomorrow? Yeah?
I'll be in from three till five, so we can.
Three to five Wednesday?
That work for you guys?
I'll be downstairs, well, no, I'll probably be back, if not, I'll come. What time? Three to five?
Three to five.
Yeah.
Time in there.
Close, I got a doctor's appointment. I'll come and see you.
Okay, sounds good.
Right?
So, when this comes up in front of us as an agenda item, I think the things that I would, the questions I would come up with were, when was the property purchased? When was, what was the old ordinance, and what is the new one, and when was, when did the change happen? Those are pieces that I.
Change happened in two thousand twenty.
Yeah, so.
We bought the property in sixteen. Sixteen, I put a single wide on mine in seventeen.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I mean, if I would have known about it, I probably could have acted sooner, you know?
Yeah.
I went, I looked it up, and I found out the old zoning.
Okay.
And there was some verbiage about, uh, there was this language changed, so it, it made it so like if they were hauling, let's say, a double wide, it, it, it talked about two, two being pulled and not one. So it changed the verbiage of, so not bringing like a single wide.
Okay.
All right. So, that's the way I interpreted it.
Yeah.
And then the, the gable, the twenty-four foot rule, because I always thought there'd be a square footage rule, so I was a little bit put off by that, because I didn't really understand what that meant, you know, so twenty-four foot.
See, that covers, that would cover your double wides, too.
It would, well, that's, that's why they did that.
Right.
However, but there's no square footage with it, so could I make it two feet, you know, the.
Exactly. Foot trailer, three hundred feet long.
With a forty-eight. I bought it like a double roof with the lean-to up coming off of the, off the gable. That might do it. I plan on doing something like that anyways.
Let's put it through a process and put it on, put it on the agenda.
Do the variance, ask for the variance, we'll start there.
Yeah, process it.
Okay. The current zoning says, "Mobile homes." Section three point eight on page six. Mobile homes located in a licensed mobile home park shall comply with the requirements of Act ninety-six of nineteen eighty-seven as amended. Mobile homes located outside of a licensed mobile home park shall be considered single-family dwellings as defined in this ordinance, and shall comply with all regulations applicable to single-family dwellings.
This is a twenty-four foot gable.
It's going back to. How the requirements are of, of that. So. Maybe diverting it back to that. That's what we're dealing with.
Okay. Well, let's put it through the process and see where we get.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's pretty much it.
All right.
So next Wednesday? This, this Wednesday.
Yeah, the day after tomorrow.
Yeah.
You gentlemen are welcome to sit through the rest of the meeting, but
You're also welcome to take off.
Don't really see the point.
And you're welcome.
About ready to break the bourbon out, man. We'll take this and look through it, though.
Yeah, sure, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for coming down, you guys. See you on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And your names again?
Harry.
Gary?
Yeah.
And Scott. And Scott. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, have a good night.
Yep, you guys.
In Monday.
Any other public input? I take a motion to approve the agenda. My second.
I'll, I'll move.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Any discussion, any changes, additions, subtractions? Or as my physics professor said, or chemistry professor said, it's nine remarks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Approval of the October twentieth meeting minutes of the Planning Commission.
I move, we accept the minutes from the meeting, Planning Commission meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second?
Aye. My second.
Any corrections or additions or comments?
I will abstain from this, because I was not on the board at that point, so.
Good call.
Not part of the vote.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and the minutes are adopted as written.
It's barely three.
Actually, we need three, otherwise.
It's what it said.
Housekeeping, ongoing business, I will try to get through this as quickly as possible. The provisions of the Planning Commission bylaws, the bylaws were adopted in January of this year after having been adopted from the Joint Homestead and Land Planning Commission. With, basically, these were adopted to MTA standards, and one of the things, after attending the MTA Planning Commission Conference a couple of weeks ago down in Frankenmuth, one of the things became clear in talking, you learn so much not only from the sessions, but talking to people. Vice chair is, is not a required position as the, actually, the MTA thought, and has in their book that is currently being revised, brought to their attention is that the actual ordinance doesn't call for a vice chair, that's certainly an option. And since we had our, our vice chair email wanting to step down from that position, and then relooking at the way our vice chair was written, it just makes things kind of cumbersome, because the way, the way it's currently written, if the vice chair steps out of the role for any reason, I'm sorry, if the chair steps out of a role for any reason, the vice chair becomes the chair, which still requires, by the set of bylaws, a vote to replace the vice chair. So you're not avoiding a vote, you're just kind of shifting it. And to my way of thinking, since it's also a requirement on the ordinance that we have an annual vote for offices, that we just eliminate the vice chair. And, and just, if something happens to me or a secretary, we just vote that position back in, somebody else, if we, if we get replaced. The other change that I'm suggesting is the role of secretary of the Planning Commission and the role of recording secretary often get confused as one role, as, because they both carry the name secretary. And I'm suggesting that the secretary do the secretary stuff, and the recording secretary do the recording secretary stuff, as I've suggested a change, plus going over in my notes again, the C one, C two, which is currently C one four, D one, D two, in what is shown is, is D two. Third line down, beginning of the word clerk for payroll purposes. That should be changed to the payroll administrator for payroll purposes, because our clerk is currently not doing the payroll. So I highlighted in yellow, probably could have made it a little brighter, the additions and the strike through, and they all appear on page one. The changes that I am proposing for our bylaw.
Read for discussion.
Because I'm proposing the changes as submitted. Second. So we can discuss it.
Um, I'll second.
All right, now we can discuss it.
Discussion.
All the stuff that I said before.
So, yeah, as I look through this, there's, there's two things that, that we're doing. One is eliminating the vice chair role. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Guide does say that Planning Commission must elect a chairperson, vice chairperson, as secretary from its members.
Well, and, and this is, you can pass this out, this is the conversation that I had with.
So, and this is what the, the MTA?
This is what the MTA says.
Says must.
And they admit they're wrong, and they're taking it out of revision that they're working on.
Okay, well, all I can work on it is what they have right now.
Well, look, look up the ordinance itself, which supersedes the MTA.
Sure, you kind of.
Does not mention vice chair.
The Michigan law does not mention vice chair.
Correct.
Says other positions as deemed necessary.
Correct.
But Michigan law also says you only have to have four meetings a year, but we choose to have more.
Correct.
So we can choose to have a vice chair if we.
That's not the point that I'm arguing. I'm arguing the point that the MTA is incorrect. As highlighted.
Okay.
We, we are not required to have a vice chair.
By Michigan law, that is correct.
Or by, and MTA advises, it does not do anything more, and they admit they're wrong on that point.
Okay, well, all I have is this from the MTA, says must, and chairperson. So that's, that's what I have. Plus, my bigger concern is the succession plan, which was implemented flawlessly a month ago, when we had a chair that unfortunately passed away, and then the vice chair, a week ahead of time, took it, was, then became the chair, sent out an agenda, had everything ready, chaired the meeting. So when the meeting started, there was a smooth and flawless transition to the chair. So for that reason, I would say we need a vice chair for the reason of a succession plan, because it just worked four weeks ago.
It, it worked four weeks ago, but it was also unnecessary, because you could have had, anybody can chair the meeting. You know, if you look up Robert's Rules, under an organization like ours, anyone can chair the meeting. It does not have to be an appointed person, per se. And in the past, we've had with board meetings, we've had when the supervisor, who by ordinance is supposed to chair the meeting, the clerk actually appointed, at one point, a trustee was appointed, who reappointed the clerk to chair the meeting.
But the vice chair would be in all of our meetings, would be all up to speed with everything that we would be going on, and that's where the smooth transition would come from.
Well, so, so, so would any other board member, or in the case of today, if John Cranmer were vice chair, and I weren't able to make it, you'd be stuck. But, the question is, there's, there are three commissioners, so you have a quorum to run a meeting. It's not a requirement, and pointing out that the MTA had it as a requirement is not a compelling argument, because the MTA is wrong.
Who would care if there wasn't a vice chair, and you didn't show up? Who would be, would we draw straws, or?
Whoever wanted to volunteer to do it, if I didn't show up. Secretary, secretary could do it, would, would be a logical choice, because that's an officer of the commission.
Well, as long as that responsibility is laid out, then I don't see any problem with it. As long as that.
If it's not broken, I don't see a need to fix it, so.
I agree with that, too.
It's, it's in there, it was approved less than a year ago. It worked incredibly well, four weeks ago. I, I don't, I'm struggling to see the need to delete something.
Well.
That, how it makes something better.
Well.
You haven't convinced me.
Now, now, now we have to elect a new vice chair.
Or.
No. If we have a vice chair position, we need to elect it.
Or, what we did last time was Anastasia filled both roles. She was vice chair and secretary.
Wants to be vice chair.
I understand that.
So we need to elect a new, new vice chair. And you can't be either chair or vice chair, but as vice chair is in line to be chair, and the ex officio can't be chair, which muddies the water instead of simplifying it.
So, yeah, I know. Doesn't make things easier if I just be vice chair?
Well, we still need secretary.
I, I'll do, or.
You accepted secretary and vice chair last month. We made a motion last month, it's in the main minutes, that you accepted both secretary and vice chair.
Yeah. Then I quickly backed the hell out of that. I ran like hell, and I figured out what I did. But no, I'm, I'm part of the, I'm part of the commission here. And if the committee needs to lean on me a little bit, well, I want to be there for them. So I just thought that there was a better choice for vice chair. If there isn't a better choice for vice chair, and we need one, and I will take that responsibility on. And I agree that we shouldn't just automatically scratch the position. I guess I shouldn't, I would like to think about it a little bit more, about the suggestion, than to disagree or disagree with it at this point. But I guess I want to go back to the committee and just say, if we need me to vice chair.
Would you like to think about it, or?
I've thought about it enough.
Should we table this till next meeting?
I, I'm good with my statement. I'll take it.
Okay.
I don't need to think about it anymore.
Okay.
But I will be leaning on you.
All right.
And I'll be calling just about every day.
Good.
That's what a good vice chair does.
Well, you know, that's kind of it, but I didn't sign up for this to stand on the sidelines either, you guys. I want to participate, and I want to participate in a big way, not a little way. And I guess this will be a good, a good step forward for that.
All right, then, then I guess the question is, what do we do about the secretary position? Because as written, you're also the recording secretary.
You, but I cannot be the recording secretary, we need it recorded.
Well, if, if we're going by the bylaws as adopted.
Can we keep?
Less than a year ago, we, he needs to stay as recording secretary.
Are we still, we're still in discussion, so we can move off the vice chair.
Okay.
So we're good with the vice chair, so moving to the recording secretary, I think that that's a great idea. I do feel, though, that we have recording secretary as D under officers. Recording secretary cannot be an officer. So whether we change the header to officers in other position, or we put recording secretary outside of officers under other positions, but recording secretary with no vote cannot be a service officer. The only officers can be someone who's appointed by a voting.
Just change what their office is, instead of officer. It's the voting issue, and it's already scheduled as D, let's say. Yeah, because the recording secretary is scheduled as D anyway, so it just becomes offices.
Yeah, so she can still do it, then.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of recording secretary.
I'm good with that whole setup.
I'm splitting the duties. I'm not in favor of eliminating the vice chair.
An additional comment I would make is the, the notices section. I don't know the process that actually happens with this township, but our recording secretary here is a township staff person?
Or by, by charter, we can committees and can hire a recording secretary.
Okay, so we're hiring a, a person.
Yeah.
For that role. So then notices, such as those that may be required for the Open Meetings Act, I think would be a something for a staff person to be managing, not someone for, something for a board member to be managing, because the staff people are going to be in the office and, and.
All of it, including the Open Meetings Act, and I understand your point. It's actually the commission's responsibility, just like it's the trustees, all the trustees' responsibility for the secretary opposed to the recording secretary, is responsible for sending out notices such as, we're, which Sarah helped us with earlier this year, sending out all of the notices to associated townships and businesses and government agencies that were redoing our master plan. So it's not just Open Meetings Act notices that we're having a meeting, it's notices that are required under the ordinance, when to do things like Open Meetings Act.
So.
I'm, I'm sorry, like the master plan.
So again, those meaning, those notices were issued, I'm thinking of like, who stuffed the envelope? Who put the stamp on it? Who sent it? You, as a secretary, you did?
I get, no, I just started.
Oh, Anastasia did.
I did.
And, and Sarah, Sarah did it. Technically, Anastasia, our previous secretary, is the one responsible for going out, or making sure it goes out. But fortunately, we have a great consultant that made sure that we didn't stub our toes.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is that, that to me, the I, I can see your point, if you want the secretary to sign a letter or something in that, that sort of case, but the fold it, stuff it in an envelope, put a stamp on it, should be an hourly paid staff person, not our board secretary.
I agree, correct.
Yeah.
And, and I think our recording secretary is involved in stuff like that, actually gets paid to do our recording secretary stuff.
So these, this notices, that's currently marked as C one four, which you already said should be C two four, I think should be the recording secretary shall oversee the issuances of such notices as may be required for Planning Commission, including Open Meetings Act, as well as notice required for specific planning ordinance.
I, I would suggest that we.
Take the Open Meetings Act out?
Have an understanding, I mean, there's, there should be an understanding that, you know, we, we've each taken an oath of office to uphold state regulations, and, and we're, by, by charter, we're supposed to follow the Open Meetings Act. So, you know, where, where we have it in our, you know, is somewhat of a redundancy. Another way of handling it is just striking, including Open Meeting Act notices. And if the notices don't go out, that's on me as chair, but on the entire commission, that you didn't catch that I didn't send it out. So, you know, talking through it, I would actually be more inclined to strike it as, as a item, as opposed to including it as a requirement for the secretary to have to make sure that that is done as well, when it's likely going to be done either by me or our recording secretary.
I think it's either you or the recording secretary that is responsible for notices.
Absolutely. Just do that.
I know I'm not part of the commission, can I?
Yes, certainly, because I include, I, I included in our no, I included in our agenda that you were, I'm allowing the public in, in this role, you're kind of part, quasi-part of the public. No, I included in our agenda that you were, I'm allowing the public in in this role, you're kind of part quasi-part of the public. If you have something to add, certainly it would be helpful.
Just kind of, I guess, clarification, because I don't know the ordinances, I don't know all of your ins and outs, what the commission does. I'm literally just here to take minutes and notes. So if you have to meet deadlines and requirements to get posted for the Open Meetings Act or on the door or whatever. That's not my responsibility, because I don't know what those requirements are from the commission's standpoint. Now, with that being said, I also do the website, okay?
Right.
So when you guys have your meetings that need to be posted and your special meetings and all that. That then needs to come from you guys to the. Pay person, not not, um, and and in this case, it happens to be me. But if I get rid of the the being the webmaster, then that would be the commission's responsibility to get that information to them. Um, not me as a recording person. That would be, because I don't know what your commission's stuff is.
Here's my suggestion, then. I will take on the responsibility of including Open Meeting Act notices as part of the chair. That way you've you've got enough on your plate already.
That works for me.
What's what's the feeling of the rest of the commissioners?
I'm just looking to see if there's any statutory responsibilities for a secretary on a planning commission. For example, that's the person who asked him posted notice. That's that's. I don't think there's anything. From a Michigan case law on on that, so. We want to. Have consensus to change the language to the the chair.
Anything else?
So about what? Help me understand. If it, that if we move it to the chair, how? How is that better than being currently on the secretary for posting meetings and OMA and whatnot?
So from my perspective, um, the. The notices need to be with the person who is ultimately, the 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 responsibility for for verifying that notices are posted. Should be with the person who is ultimately responsible for choosing the dates of that meeting. Oh, and or recording the dates. So that's where my brain's going. It's like you're either, you're either the person that is is saying, these are the dates that I want them to be. And like, that typically in my past has stemmed from the chair's schedule. Um, or it would be the recording secretary being the person that is on staff and can walk up and post it on the door. You know what I mean? Like, once the board approves it, then they're responsible to walk up and post it on the door.
That's what we need. And we need to be able to instruct that person.
Right.
As to, you know, what is to be there.
Well, tech- technically, if I tell the the township clerk to post it, it's then the clerk's responsibility.
But it was your responsibility.
Responsibility to set the date, set the agenda.
Right.
So I might as well take on the responsibility of making sure that we're not violating the law.
Making sure that you've got those, that information to the clerk or the webmaster or whoever within the township staff needs it. In enough time to. Meet the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Any other discussion about notices?
No, I'm good.
Uh, the one change, uh, to attendance, uh, changing clerk to payroll administrator. Any discussion about that?
That's how it works here. I'm fine with that. Um, my other question was related to the correspondence item. Whether or not that should be a recording secretary. And so issuing formal written correspondence with other groups or persons as directed by the planning commission. All communications, petitions, reports, or other written materials shall be brought to the attention of the planning commission. That to me sounds like the job description of somebody who's in the office.
Yeah, but we are all part-time. In in the word, in the ordinance, it falls under the secretary's job. Again, that's what I was trying to describe earlier. We're doing a master plan. We have to send out a notice that there's a master plan to a whole bunch of people. Technically, under the secretary's signature, unless you hire a consultant who is kind enough to do that for us and has done it before and make sure that we cross every I and dot every T. It's not a recording secretary, you know, keep, keep in mind that prior to my suggestion that we have a recording secretary here. That has been approved by the board to have a recording secretary. The confusion is what's recording secretary? What secretary's secretary? On under the statute, it's his job.
Okay.
This is why I wanted to separate the two, because it gets very confused. Who's who's going to be doing what? And he already, he already felt overloaded and to throw the recording secretary on top of everything else just wasn't going to happen.
Too much. But, um. However you need to do it, all that. The public discussed, okay?
So just to recap, uh, proposed changes. Uh, we're going to leave in vice chair. We're going to change. Officers to offices. Dropping the R. And I will change the verbiage, except as noted and see below, because that will change. See, vice chair will will remain. Uh, see. Sub subsecretary C one will be correspondence with no changes. C two with, uh, including Open Meeting Act notices moved to the chair's position. Adding D, the recording secretary is a non-voting position whose primary responsibility is to accurately accurately record all meeting activities. Followed by D one, which is to do the minutes. Uh, with the highlights and changes, uh, to note that it's recording secretary as opposed to secretary. Uh, also with the synopsis of discussion points made during public comment as well as during meet, during agenda items. Um, and I will, well, I probably should explain that now since we're voting on it. One of the things picked up at the, uh, MTA conference on for, uh, planning commissions. One of the easiest ways to lose in court is to have minutes that say, this was the motion, this was the vote, this is the motion, this is the vote. You know, Farmer Jones came to present his case. Unless you have some synopsis of the discussion in there, the court is almost a hundred percent going to lean towards the individual. Even though you have everything in place, you you're not showing a record. So that's why that verbiage was added. And then, uh, what is C two, uh, notices again, uh, Open Meetings Act removed the responsibility of the chair. Any further discussion?
Yes. D, recording secretary now becomes E because we kept the vice chair.
So we will renumber D and E.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on the minutes. Uh, Mike and I attended a conference with the same speaker that you had, Jim. Hundred percent on board. The more the better on the minutes, especially special use of cases and whatnot. That was.
And you also. We'll also notice on the agenda, I made a note as they also suggested that we were recording this on video, hello, people. Uh, and also talking to MTA, I'm also recording this, this is a backup. Uh, we do not need a transcript of of the meeting. There's just the highlights of what was discussed. So any further discussion? All in favor of the changes as read?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, is there any chance we could get, we could have a clean copy?
Oh, absolutely.
I feel like there's a lot going on in what we just discussed and have a.
A clean.
Clean copy.
A clean copy will be coming and will be, uh, become part of the minutes. I will, I will send it out as soon as clean copy is produced.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Um, so I I would not vote on this until I've got a clean copy personally. So I I would say nay.
You can say, you can say nay.
Complete copy.
All right. Well, you're outvoted three to one, so you will be getting a clean copy. Commission member, uh, I think we've covered the recording secretary and welcome our new recording secretary. Thank you very much for for taking on this responsibility.
I feel though we need to make a motion as a board to approve Rosemary Swervow as our recording secretary.
I would second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Good thing. Thank you. There has been some confusion as to. Who's who's appointed, how long you're here and and so forth. And I've consulted with, uh, our supervisor, I consulted with the MTA, I consulted with a number of attorneys down at the MTA conference. And apparently even when, uh, our. Technically speaking, even though we've had a planning commission for a long time, it was a joint planning commission with Homestead. Our planning commission started April first of twenty twenty. And those appointments weren't specific as a new newly formed planning commission. We're supposed to have appointments of one, two, and three years for the four appointed, uh. Publicly appointed, uh, commissioners. Apparently that was not done. Uh, and we had a clean sweep of the planning commission in January of this year. And it was done, uh, with Mary Dew, uh, being appointed for a year, Jim Clark for two, Anastasia for two. Uh, John Truax for three. And I was the ex officio member at the time, and ex officio members serve as long as they're appointed by the board and a board member. So the idea of having one, two, and three-year appointments is so that there is a changeover every year of roughly a third.
They signed me up for three. I was signed up for three as well.
Well, according to the records that I looked at, uh, you took, uh, Mary Dew's place for a year. And technically, your appointment runs out, uh, the end of this coming March.
Well, could you straighten me out on that? That was not my understanding.
Well, uh, we'll have to go figure that out. Uh, I'm filling Jim Clark's position and he was appointed. As a two-year, and I'm ending March thirty first of twenty seven. Uh, and we we took the. Discussion with the supervisor, we took the, uh. Township's calendar here as the starting point, because that goes back to twenty, which nobody can really follow any any clear. Thing from then. So that's that's going to be considered the starting point. And Valerie, you took Anastasia's position, which was also two years. So you're March thirty first of twenty seven. And John Truax was, uh, according to the minutes from, uh, the January meeting of the board, took a three-year position. So if you thought you took a three-year position, uh, we're going to have to have a discussion with the supervisor and the board of trustees and see if. You and John Truax want to swap.
No, you've done on for three. I'll be done in how many months?
Uh, March thirty first. Four, four or five months.
Whatever, whatever we got.
Okay, so we'll have that conversation.
And they can reappoint you and reappoint you and reappoint you.
Yes.
Well, I was told three years and I'm like, oh, don't be bashful. Sign me right on up, you know? I might even be alive in three years.
Well, there you go.
I don't care.
All right, well. I was told to bring this up, so I brought it up.
Can can we get a copy of of that, uh, schedule there?
Sure.
For all of us, for our records, that way we know, and especially for me as a board member. Uh, so if.
Sure.
Going forward, if if I, and we'll just pick on Val for a moment. The motion should have been made to appoint Val to succeed Anastasia's term, which ends March, whatever it is, thirty first there. At the board level.
Well, at at the board level, it probably should have been done, but again, um. The statute clearly points out that if there is a vacancy, you're filling the slot, you're not resetting the ticker, so.
So.
It's it's something that you want to bring up to the board, you can.
Yeah. It'd just be nice to have that schedule. I we're all to know.
I will make a copy of that.
Thank you.
And make a copy of it before, except the day. Um, written reports, seven, two. Any question regarding the zoning administrators' report?
Yeah, uh, not a question. Let's see here. Maybe a recommendation if the zoning administrator would be so inclined. This is a zoning administrator report.
I'm actually looking at changing a bus, kind of modeling what, uh, Sarah really used to do, as I thought on my computer.
So, uh, just some more robust information, uh, especially as the planning commission is generating fees. It'd be nice to capture how much that, uh, is going through the zoning administrator across his desk. And, uh, so I just brought that as a suggestion and and great, Mike, if you're working on something already.
Yeah.
But just something a little bit more rebuff, robust.
Absolutely.
Uh, and and the other stuff is still in there that this, you know, how many calls you took or emails.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll be adding that, uh, in in the future. It'll be just pretty much what's what's going across my desk and then, uh, what's still outstanding. As far as maybe land divisions and such, and then what we are at year to date. So how many single-family dwellings, how many commercial, things like that.
Okay.
Would you like the fees on there as well, Ted?
I think it'd be nice. I mean, I I do.
Okay.
Being the guy that was on the finance committee, yeah.
I know there was, uh, there was also talk about, uh, changing some of the, uh, prices on services. Yes, maybe somebody wanted to discuss with Ben.
Yeah. We voted to increase the, um, split, the land.
The land.
Blitz, yeah, to one eighty.
Okay.
From.
One hundred?
Yeah, one hundred, yeah, to cover, to cover the cost.
And then what about the additional splits? Would that stay at the?
I think we left it at ten.
Okay. And when we start that process?
It was effective immediately.
Oh, it was.
Yeah.
And you, did you get notice of that?
I did not. Yeah, that's a miss on the board's behalf.
That's why they have an ex officio lien on.
And maybe that's a lesson learned. Maybe that's my role going forward. I mean, that that's probably a lesson for me. I sit in that, at at that board and we, you know, we had that motion, we had discussion and whatnot. I should have dialed one eight hundred Mike right away to let you know that that was approved, what the amount was. Yeah, so.
Maybe we could get a list of 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 all the costs for things, uh, re-redone.
Yeah.
So that's added in there.
We had another point of discussion at the MTA conference was making sure that, you know. For a variance that they're requesting, I don't know that they. Need a special meeting, but if a special meeting is called, you know, the board is paid, it's a cost of the township to run a special meeting. And that to be passed along to an applicant. I am not familiar enough with the ins and outs and how much time consuming it is. Uh, how much discussion there needs to be for some of these things. That if we can't handle it at a regular meeting, you know, the cost be passed along. Don't know how important that is, but as long as we're talking costs, that that. Don't know how important that is, but as long as we're talking costs, that, that came up.
I'm glad we had this discussion.
We'd have discussions. Anything else? Yes, no? Uh, my MTA takeaway report, any questions first?
I want to thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Not what you meant. If there are any questions, um, on, on page two, uh and we will be coming back to this in item page one. One of the things that I know, just sitting both on as a trustee and now on this commission, past conversations is something comes in as a special request or a variance or, you know, there are some things that we want our zoning administrator to handle. The board, the commissioners, and it's really those three don't know what their, their duties are. The zoning board of appeals is kind of clear cut. They're the quasi judiciary branch of, of our township that hears appeals. But we'll, we'll come back to that. Then I just want to quickly point out a couple of things. Let me get my thumbs working. On page five, um again, from a legal standpoint, one of the things Mike, that you want, might want to look at developing or someone wanted to volunteer, and I'm sure the MTA probably has a form, is a notice of decision. You know, and may, maybe that decision might come from you, it might come from the commission, but it starts a time clock for appeals. And if a notice of decision doesn't go out, the clock never started. So two years later, somebody could appeal what they thought was a bad ruling. It's just, you know, one of those little legal things that, you know, all the attorneys were recommending. And another thing from the standpoint of, you know, particularly as we're talking about the blight ordinance. Uh, I'd like to get you and Ben, uh, and if, if I can't, or vice chair can't, uh, meet with our, our circuit judge to, you know, where, where do townships go wrong? Where, where can we do a better job of implementing whatever so that it runs smoothly through his court? And I, I have a passing acquaintance with him. Uh, he probably wouldn't pick me out from a hole in the wall, but uh he's, he seems very open to that kind of discussion whenever I bumped into him about just how things work.
I didn't, I did talk to the uh zoning administrator from Grant Township just in the day about this particular discussion we're having right now. He said that it was very difficult to um have the courts find towards the township versus the
Residence.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, I remember that from
He said, yeah, Mike?
He, he's, he said that it's very hard. So he said it was very hard to get the, the judge to find towards or for the township. Zoning administrator or the township versus the residence.
Cause, cause usually they don't do, do their job right in some way, shape, or form. One of the most amazing things, we'll be covering it in Blight as well, is you can't go onto somebody's property without a warrant. You can't send a drone up over their property.
At all.
That's trespassing. It's like, what? You know, how about if it's three thousand feet, you know, it's amazing stuff. So yeah, I mean, the, the, the table definitely seems to be tilted towards supporting the individual, which quite frankly, I'm not opposed to.
No, me neither.
Just, just means we need to make sure that we're dotting every I and crossing every T uh every step of the way. So, and considering that you've volunteered to be our enforcement officer, we want, we want to make you as successful as possible. Um, the last thing that I, I found very interesting on page six in the last, um, last paragraph is that a township can actually put a moratorium on zoning requests by exercising its police powers. What do you mean we have police powers? We have police powers. Uh, and we can actually, if somebody comes in with a zoning weird request, I don't know what it would be. We can say, let's vote to put a moratorium on it. And we can't just do it and do nothing. We have six months to figure out what, what it is we're gonna do. And we can make, you know, whether it's a big corporation or a couple of residents, we can make them sit on their hands while we figure out what we want our ordinance to be and then implement that ordinance. So I just thought there was something incredibly interesting that I did not know.
I didn't know that either.
Any other, any other comments? Suggestions, criticisms, side remarks? All right, going on to the fun stuff. Sarah Kirk, our master plan consultant. The floor is yours.
All right, cool. I will follow up to what you said about the moratorium real quick because I, I had experience with that in the village of Anzonia. We had an instance come up right as they were finishing their master plan where they needed to it was a Dollar General general situation. Came in, they wanted to know what they could do. Lawyer suggested moratorium. But there, um, this is a victory here of municipal law all over the state. I stress that you, when you do a moratorium, it has to still be based on something in your master plan. So like you can't, like whatever, you can do moratoriums, they just can't be
Can't just say stuff about a whole cloth.
You have to find, find something in your master plan to support it, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So like for that one, um we tied it back to, in our master plan, we had said we wanted this mixed use district on US thirty one with neighborhood shops and neighbor, neighborhood type development. So that was what made it allowed.
Since, since you went back to that, I realized that I just skipped something. And that was the uh Planning Enabling Act highlights. And I do have, unless you have questions, I do have at least one thing that I want to uh pull from that. As, as we are charged under uh Enabling Act thirty three of two thousand and eight, general purpose of what we're doing needs to satisfy a bunch of criteria. And the one thing that I really want to stress, because I have issue with the way our finances have been handled as a township for a number of years, needs to, needs to be incoordinated, adjusted, harmonious, efficient, and economical. Uh, and I'm gonna stress economical, you know, for the, for more public health safety, morals, general welfare promotion of or adequate provisions. Doesn't mean we have to have, you know, Rolls Royce stuff or the best of the best. It just needs to be, and it's not suggesting that we only do adequate. Well, sometimes we want to go a grade or two up, but uh wise and efficient expenditure of public funds is what I really want to stress. And I guess that's, that's it. Unless there are any other thoughts or comments.
No, once again, well done. Thank you for that.
Interesting reading. All right, sorry about that. Now I'm back to Sarah.
Sorry. I'll just start out with the monthly progress update. Really, the inventory is pretty much complete. I, I was able to get another round of photos, uh, fall photos the last couple of weeks. So I think I'm good there. I did um give you guys updated drafts, chapters one, two, three, four, and part of chapter five, which was a more full, the complete analysis of the public engagement part of this. And then the public survey results, I completely compiled that and it's in the appendix. So that part is complete. The only thing really left on that task is just to um continue to update the website as we go along. And then um task three, what we're still working on is the draft report. So that's what's really left.
Can I interject that those are complete?
Yes.
From your part, pending review on our part, correct?
Correct, yes. And that really, it really ties into task three, the report. So whatever you guys find and need to review, it would, it'll be what's documented in the report section. So we'll revise it there. So the tasks that are, the big tasks that are left to, to do under task three is to review the draft goals and the potential strategies, which is what I gave you all last month. And then um potential action plan items and the future land use map, which is the stuff I gave you a couple or last week and then the future land use map today. And then I'm talking with Jim, we had talked about, you guys really haven't had a chance to kind of sit down as a group yet. So talking about, or do you want to do a workshop meeting to kind of make sure that you guys have all your thoughts? Because this really is, the master plan is authored by the planning commission. So just to make sure that you have enough time to really go through the goals and objectives and action plan items. And then also the future land use map. So that's kind of where we are just overall. I didn't get any comments back from anybody on the stuff I handed out last month about the goals and strategies, which is fine. It was really for you guys to di- digest and you still have more time to, to review that. So what I did this month, the, the, this memo that you got, organized all those into goals and actual strategies. And again, this is a draft. This would be my take on going through the process and the comments and everything. Um, so I the goals
Goals and strategies, do those come?
Yeah, this, that's a draft.
Sarah, thank you.
So goal one, um, on three strategies to put under that, that I think um we can fit all these action items under that we'll come up with. So goal one has to do with fiscal responsibility and efficiency, so the economical part of it. Improving transparency, communications, fiscal responsibility, and efficiency within the township. So the first strategy is supporting the development of a capital improvement plan or any other financial planning efforts for the township for a long range, long term and large expenditures. So under that, when we get to the, I'll just use this as an example. When we get to action plan items, the action plan items that you would then put under that would be things like establish your planning process and develop your capital improvement plan. So that's what you are going to do. It's kind of like you work backwards. So if anybody challenges, why are, why is the planning commission wanting to do this capital improvement plan? Well, it's a strategy that was developed as a part of the public feedback during the master plan. So it's like you're setting yourselves up for the things you want to do over the next five to ten years. So that's what the action plan items are and how they kind of work backwards and fit into these strategies to support what you want to do.
So Sarah, the flow then, if I'm looking at it, would be goal. The strategies, action.
And yes, the actions are those very specific things that
Goal number two within the strategies, yes.
Yeah.
That's how we plan to achieve it.
Yes, and so like action plans may meet several strategies, like
Yep.
Like
Yep.
And then I did do in chapter nine, I did one example table. So I put it, I put that in a table, how, how I will end up doing all of these. And in that list, it lists which strategy it meets. So some of those it may meet one strategy, others it may meet two or three. It just depends on what those are. So strategy number one point two, we're going to seek and seek to maintain and improve communication methods within township residents. So then we would look to action items like maintaining your website.
Corporate leadership.
Yes, that, those type of things. So those would meet that strategy and that goal. Provide clear procedures for township official, officials to guide key decision-making requirements. So that would be things like maintaining your bylaws. Creating procedures for development review, whatever those type of things are. And I listed, I listed some of those under potential action items. Like one of the, one of the things that you talked about tonight, adapting and reviewing existing term limits. Like that kind of stuff falls under falls under strategy one point three. Then the second goal has to do with transportation. Let's see. Has to do with transportation type items. So maintain the current road system and plan for future improvements that cause minimum environmental or ecological disturbance. So that's your first strategy. Continue to coordinate with federal, state, and county transportation authorities and systems. So that's whatever, um smoke these out, so things like, um, it could be like raising public awareness for which roads are maintained by state, county, and local dollars. Sometimes that's a confusing thing for people. So um completing a Pacer rating studies. I don't know, I don't know if any township's ever done that, but that's um something that could be an action item. Maybe that's not something you do right away. Maybe that's a five-year goal or something. Inquiring traffic impact studies as part of development review processes. So let's say Meyer wanted to come in. He would know that, hey, this backs up that you need them to do a traffic impact study because of your strategies, your goals in the master plan.
Not necessarily things that we have to do right now.
Correct.
There are things that we're putting in place so that we have backstop and deal with things like Dollar General coming in.
Correct, yes. I put in, one action item is working with the school to assess walking routes and bus stops. Again, that's another one. It might not be anything that comes up now, but something that you have in there. Let's say the school wants to look at adding a bus stop out front, something. Then you have it in here that, yes, you're gonna support them and look at, to make sure they're meeting whatever other rules you have in place.
Or if you're requesting safe routes to school grant funding.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's gotta be in your master plan.
Yes. Yep, um, so the related goals and strategies, I, I listed even if they make sense to have in there. And this would be like a great during your workshop to go through these, make sure that all these make sense to you. Are there, is there anything I missed?
Really helpful. This is very helpful.
So if you go to goal three, those are land use and policy decisions to preserve and protect open spaces, waterways. So this is kind of like your conservation natural resource goal. And the strategies, three point one, three point two. And three point four, deal with natural resources, forested areas. Again, those are things, some of these came out of what you had in the existing master plan. Some of them came out of suggestions from people during workshops. And then if you flip to the back, I do have potential action items for rural, like the rural character and protecting water quality and water resources. Those are some that again may, may support several different strategies if we write them down. Goal four has to do with housing. So supporting existing housing needs by providing adequate services, financial opportunities and regulations to maintain health safety and also property values. So those are things where you talk about blight issues.
One, one of the questions I do have, um, goal four, strategy four point three. Uh, explore options to support improvement and man, maintenance of existing Um, explore options to support improvement and man, maintenance of existing housing units through township tax incentives and reward programs.
Yes.
How, how much of that is helpful from the standpoint of having it in there as a backstop for things that we never thought of, as opposed to, I don't ever see that ever happening?
That is, that is pretty specific. And that's maybe one that we can mark and it could be written more generically. Because you do, I would say you probably want to have some in there, something in there to say that you were supporting improvements and maintenance of existing housing. But maybe this is one where it's too specific.
I mean.
And that could just be straight ahead.
I can kind of imagine somebody reading that and saying, well, it says in your master plan that you have tax incentives for, you know, whatever. Where's mine? You know, the master plan is in our ordinance, it's just a general direction.
Very legitimate, where's mine, I can hear it, absolutely.
No, so, that's a good point, because sometimes some of these, um, they can get, be too specific and it's better to make them more general. And then you don't get stuck in people thinking. Probably, I'll look at it further, but I think it could probably be just taken like.
You might want some language in there for the future, because this is five years out. That maybe there's some factory or whatever that comes in, that's going to bring a lot of employment in. And that we might want to say, whatever, whatever tax rate you are, maybe we knock a chink a point off or something like that. But at least it gives us that language to do so.
Yes.
Because this is my first master plan review and development. I'm constantly amazed at things that I read going, well, we don't need that. And then, to gain the understanding that it's not what we're going to do necessarily. It's a backdrop to protect all the residents from stuff, stuff that we haven't thought about.
Right, yeah. What's that?
Then, goal five, um, has to do a little bit more with housing. It's about supporting a range of housing types and then smart residential growth. That, the strategies 5.1 and 5.2 there deal with some of the needs that people had where they want to do things like, do a lot of different types of accessory dwelling units or things like that, or, or different, whatever it may be, some, just something like that.
What I've heard a number of times is somebody that owns a large plot of land, you know, mul- multiple 2.5 acres, whatever. As I understand, our ordinance is now, they can't build a second home, or let's, let's make it a, a forest residential five acre minimum. They can't, even though there's physically room to build a second home for their grandkids or whatever. Our ordinances say they can't. But I think we have a number of people moving up here from big cities that, and others, that would like to do that. And, you know, in some cases, they can't subdivide their, their lots because they're not subdivisible size-wise that, you know. And not that we need to discuss it and, and think about it, you know, at, at this meeting, but, you know, that's something do we want to allow?
We, we resolved for that, uh, prior to the 2020.
And, and that took it away.
Yes.
So, there you go.
Yeah, so that's, the strategy would be where you could fit some of those action items in, like, do you explore, do you explore that in the future?
They're just looking with, trying to set even a lot of their.
Well, they, they have for a long time, right in town.
Oh my God, I was talking to, um, and they're just pulling her hair out.
Anybody who has a garage out back in the alley.
You can put a fourplex back there.
Sure enough.
I, I, I think our guiding goal for a lot of these things is, we want to be as accommodating as possible as a township. But we also have a duty to protect other residents from, you know, whatever's going on, you know. So I might not be able to put my GoCard track in because it makes too much noise. Well, that was tough on me, so.
Yeah, so, then goal six has to do with, um, commercial development, um, strategies that deal with business type. So.
Some of that's not correct.
I have three different strategies listed under that. And then, if you put to the back on page eight, I listed eight different essential items for that. And again, some of these came out of what you had in there. You just see master plan and then things that came up from that, and then, going through all the comments that people wrote in. Goal seven, was about appropriate development requirements and regulations. I'm talking about things like controlling development densities and zoning districts, buffers, things like buffer between uses. And then zoning regulations to support your preservation of quiet and rural character. So again, back. Some of those action items could then go under some of those strategies. Goal eight, has to do with public facilities, um, including roads, trails, your public spaces, like parks and other buildings to serve, serve the community. So that was things like strategy number 8.1, adequately maintaining township facilities. And then you put action items related to that under those. And then goal nine specifically dealt with recreation. Maintaining and planning for adequate range of recreation opportunities. And then, again, listed a couple of potential strategies from comments that were received at the end of, end of this. So, normally what I would do is give this out and ask you guys just to look it over. And if you see anything you missed or don't like the wording on anything, give me comments. And if you have a workshop to go over it in detail, that is even better. Because, again, ultimately, it's, these are things that you want to dig into in over the next five years.
This is really helpful, I will be reading this. This is exceedingly helpful, and my suggestion would be that we, we really need, and I know they did this six years ago, in 2020, 2019, when they were breaking away from the joint commission. Had, actually, one month, I think they had three or four meetings. I know a couple of months, they had a couple of meetings, but rather than flooding Sarah with, here are my thoughts, here are your thoughts, you know, she's got five different thoughts going at her, not all agreeing. I think we need to have some workshops to really hammer this out and say, okay, no, yeah, I, I think this one could be, you know, blue and everybody else says green, you know, I'll give up on the blue. We, we need to move this forward, so it's not, as Sarah said, this is our master plan, we, you know, incredibly helpful and thank you for the direction. But we, we need to be the authors and I, I think we need to have, you know, more than just the regular meeting to, to hash through some of this stuff, so.
I'll participate in that meeting.
Good.
The last thing, the last thing I brought for you guys tonight is the future land use map, which, I'm glad you put in your packet the existing future land use map. This one adds a little bit more complexity than the one you have right now. The one that you have right now, um, this does a day area of the township as, as commercial, medium density or low density. A lot of times, if you look at other master plans, they usually have like, um, more, a little bit more of a breakdown than this to help guide you. Most will call out several different types of housing densities. If you think about a future land use map, future land use map is your absolute vision for the future. Like, if a tornado came and blew apart all of inland township, how would you put it back? So that's kind of what you should think about when you think of future land use map. It doesn't go by parcels. It doesn't have to go by parcels, it can, but you can blur the lines, it's how you want it to be. So let's say, somebody sold off a huge chunk of land and then another chunk of land got split up 10 times. This is how, what you would look at if they came and asked to rezone things. What would guide you? So this is your guide for when stuff like that happens. So, on this one, I added, looking at the existing land use map, which is why I gave you both. If you look at your existing land use map, you have several different types of uses. So, I broke them down, your future category, future land use categories into conservation, which is typical. These are kind of typical that you would find on other people's future land use maps. Low-density residential, medium-density residential, a mixed use, because you do have a mixed use zoning category for abundant area. And then, commercial, and then, public or semi-public, which is schools, churches, museums, libraries, those type of uses. So, when you do your zoning plan, which was in the, one of the drafts I sent out, you have to match these up to your zoning categories. And these future land use categories match up, which I can match them all up to your zoning categories that you have now. So I, I think these make sense unless anybody has issue with them. So, if you look at your existing land use map and then your previous future land use map, this kind of gives you a little bit more detail going forward. What I did, um, also look at the comments and the, the, the data you gathered during all that inventory. A lot of the comments I saw, people didn't really want any more commercial. I don't, I didn't see a lot of people saying, hey, we want to open up a lot of more, a lot more things for commercial. So, I didn't really show a lot more commercial on here than what you already have. What I did show is the orange surrounding that red commercial in some places, which would be a mixed use. So, it would give you a kind of a flux zone. Like, so, let's, that would be like, say, somebody came in and they wanted to have a business out front with, uh, some sort of residential development as a part of it. Would you allow that? This would allow you that, kind of that flexibility to do some things like that. It's a, accent, they act as transition zones between residential and commercial. And really, ultimately, just give you flexibility when, when, um, deciding how to rezone things. So, if you notice, I did put quite a bit of that along US 31 instead of strict commercial future land use. But again, it's kind of up to you guys.
That's a natural spot, correct.
Um, the darker yellow is a medium, um, density residential and that matches up to your, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's two, is it two acres?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Well, and, and low-density residential would be more like the for- forest residential, five acres.
Yes, so. Yes, so low-density and medium-density somewhat match up to those categories that you had in here.
Well, let me ask this question, because I have a neighbor. Currently, um, on the existing land use map, if you look at the upper left-hand corner where it says Huen's Road, there's that little, little drop-down inside of vacant residential land.
That little orange line?
Yeah, where, where the light yellow makes a, a big fat U. That little thing that drops down, that's me. And my neighbor to the west, um, actually, I own the property, the property in the east, which is vacant. But the neighbor to the south and possibly the neighbor to the north, but at, at least two of my neighbors have said, we're currently, as I understand it, we're, uh, rural residential. They would like to make it forest residential, being a five acre minimum. But as I understand, your draft of the future land use makes it all low-density residential, which would be five acres. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, so that would, so that would then say to you, if you were making that decision to, would you allow that change? Then that would tell you, yes, you would, because low-density residential there is okay to you guys. Because that's what you've decided in your future land use map. So, you would use that to say yes. It's, it says that we want low-density residential there, so that makes sense to rezone it.
But then that, uh, follow-up question, it looks to me like the future land use map changes a lot of what conceivably is rural residential, two and a half acres, changes that to five acre low-density residential. Am I reading that correctly? I mean, basically the.
No, this isn't, that's not zoning, that's just use.
Current use.
Yeah, so I, that's not looking at the zoning map.
Ah, okay.
The zoning map is different. I think it's pretty much all zoned. I'll, I'll pull it up.
All right, that is confused the hell out of me.
Yeah, the zoning map is different. This is future land use, it's just use.
Oh, gotcha.
It's just what it's used as.
I'm sorry.
So it's a little bit different than zoning.
So if my neighbors want, want to move to forest residential, they'd have to put in a request to do that?
Yes.
All right.
But, I mean, if, when you put in a land use application, there are several uses that are listed in their zoning ordinance that you can do in forest residential. But I'm assuming there are, just like commercial, there's several, there's a whole list of uses that you can do. So, the, uh, that's just broken out by residential use. It's a little, it's a little bit different. That's why your zoning plan and the report, um, it matches them up to, to, uh, your future land use categories will then match up to what zoning categories are allowed in each of those future land uses. So yeah, so don't, um, get super hung up on what is the zoning, exact zoning, when you're looking at future land use, it's more, what do we want it to be? Do we want it to be a low, low density? Do we want to allow the more compact lots and, and that, it might make more sense in the chapter nine. I believe it's the chapter nine of the draft that I sent, there's a description of each of these categories. And then, low-density, medium-density and what would be included in each of those things. So it might make more sense to, with that description and then what the future land use map.
So just, just looking at like the center of the map where it says US 31, and when you just follow Stanley Creek down, where it's, again, this is all just hypothetical at this point. Where the future land use as commercial, that covers, um, the existing land use, a bunch of residential. Um, and I'm, I'm just, having talked to a number of people that are concerned about this, that and the other thing. Somebody's going to see, and again, it helps to clarify that this is not zoning, this is land use. Uh, that's a subtle difference that most people that live, you know, where it says creek under Stanley Creek. You know, those are all residential places. Well, you just, you just changed me to commercial.
Correct. Yes, and that does usually make people.
Ruffle feathers.
Yes, on a future land use map. So if there are any, that would be something for you guys to know better than me. If there are any sensitivities to any parcels, then just don't change them. Maybe put your commercials someplace else if we're trying to get.
My, my general sense is not even talking to people, people don't like change period.
Correct.
And that's kind of my, my residential property just became commercial. Or a more mixed use commercial. So something to keep in mind.
Yes, and so and again, compare it to your existing future land use map, because I think that has a big red block over most of thirty-one in several spots, so. But certainly, if you know that there's instances where it will be sensitive with people, then don't show it there. We could show it someplace. If you're trying to get specific amounts of commercial in, because you do want to make sure that you have enough room for growth. I guess that's, that's the last part of my update and it would be, um, if you guys were going to have a workshop to discuss some of this stuff in detail, it would be awesome to have it back by the December meeting. And then if I had your feedback by that December meeting, then I could really finalize the draft. And have a final draft for you for January. Timeline makes sense.
I think it makes sense if we've actually had a workshop. With all of the discussion points and the text that you've written. And maybe I'm the only one that feels this way. I think, I think we're going to need a couple workshops to, to get through all this stuff. Because th- this meeting has already taken longer than I had, had anticipated. Not that we should rush things, but like to keep things going. But I think once we get into the, the meat of materials Sarah's presented, there's going to be some discussion back and forth, which, you know, what, what should we present? And while there's a draft, uh, you know, we still need to have some, some public meetings and I'm certainly open to having more than one public workshop to discuss this to both take in information, you know, directing that we want to take this and also to avoid headaches in the future. You know, oh, you just changed my property from this to that, or you know, whatever it might be. I think there's a lot to discuss.
There are, I think I'm reading this project schedule, Gantt chart properly, but it looks like there are other public meetings after the draft is released.
The only public meeting that would be left would be the public hearing.
So that full, fully red box number five in April?
Yes, okay, so what is left statutory? It is for you guys to release the draft plan to the public. And when you do that, it's, the draft report is complete and you put it in several locations wherever there's usually, some people put it in a library, some people just have it in their front desk. And we'll put it on the website so that anybody can download it and learn something. But then that gives, and then at that same time, we're also putting out the notices and it's going to every adjacent township. The lists and notifications that we sent out at the beginning, which was like fifteen-ish entities. So it goes out that way. Whenever you guys motion to release the draft, that starts the sixty-three day public review. And then you have your public hearing after that, and it can be anytime after that. Does it have to be exactly sixty-three days? Um, if you guys so decide that you want another month in between that sixty-three day review and in the public hearing, you could have additional workshops at any time. I've seen townships do it that way. So.
Well, we're, we're already delayed a month from your original schedule. And we haven't had any commissioned workshops to discuss our hard group thinking. And while I appreciate your work, I don't want to just rubber stamp what you've done. Because I don't, you know, again, it's our responsibility to write this. You've been incredibly helpful, but I think we need to, to dig down. And some of us are very new.
Um, what types of revisions are allowed after the draft plan release? Because I'm thinking there's public feedback here and then final adoption. Is the draft plan, that whole blue line like a living document or is it?
It is a living, living document.
Okay.
So let's say at the public hearing. There's twenty major comments and you guys were not comfortable with recommending it to the township board at that time. Um, for adoption, then you could I guess I don't know the exact term. I can't, I can't think of the exact term right now, but you would put it on hold. Until you have another meeting and sort through all those comments that you received. And then at that time. You could then, after you were comfortable fixing all the comments that everybody brought, then you could recommend it to the board.
So we would then recommend it to the board that doesn't restart that version of the draft, doesn't restart our sixty-three day I don't review period?
This is, this is why I would have to look back. I think and I can't, I'm, I'm losing the, it's not a table.
Suspend it.
This is, it's one of those tables that you can suspend the public hearing.
Okay, you can end it, yeah.
Yeah, and then, so then you can reopen it. If you say, like at the end of the public hearing.
You suspend it.
It's what you have to say when you're reopening it. Like you have to, I believe Wes Benz, Benzey Joint Mass, they did it when we were doing that master plan. You have to, at that public hearing, you have to say, we're suspending it, or whatever that word is that I can't think of. We're suspending it till next month. But you just have to say at that meeting. And then you can keep it open. If you don't say at the meeting, then you have to re-advertise and all of that.
It's been a while since I've read Robert's rules, but I believe you table motions and suspend meetings.
Yes, I, I think you're right. But anyways, so if you do it correctly, then you don't have to open up the, another public hearing.
Mention meeting.
Yes, and if you, if you do close it, then you, yes, you just have to advertise it again. But I don't, it's not the sixty-three days. It's, I believe it's just the fifteen day notice that you would have to do again.
The reason I'm asking that question is because if we're talking about having a workshop to create a draft and, and possibly having multiple workshops. If there's room to have, I'd say it's the second workshop during that prepare draft plan, big blue bar. So we're kind of still going through it as our township residents and, and businesses are still going through it. Like if that's a living document, then we could kind of condense that timeframe, rather than finding two dates to schedule workshops and then go with a, with the draft plan. I don't know, I don't know which ways are reasonable.
I mean, I guess if you're comfort, if you're pretty comfortable with the draft plan. It is like ninety percent good to release to the, for the sixty-three day review and knowing that you're probably going to have some revisions to it. I think that's okay. I've had it where you release it the sixty-three days and then I'll get like a list of, I've gotten a list of, um, comments from like the adjacent planning commission. Sent, send a list of comments like this goal doesn't, um, should have another action item or, or this. Whatever it is, this doesn't make sense here. We, we just structure the sentence. I've gotten those comments from adjacent planning commissions. And that's okay, because then at the public hearing, you just read it in and say, this was received. I recommend changing it by page ninety, we'll change the sentence, page one hundred, we'll add this action item. And then when you recommend that draft, if that's all it is. If it's just like a page of items like that, then you just say, we recommend it to the township board as discussed at the public hearing. If it would come back and I have never seen, I've never seen it come back with so much, rarely. I, I don't think I've really heard it come back with so much that you'd have to delay. So I wouldn't anticipate that happening. Another township that I'm working with, I think, um, I'm actually working with them, they asked me to help them out. They got to a point in the master plan, they got it through the sixty-three day review, they had a new set of planning commissioners, didn't like the format of the report. So they went back and to the drawing board and, because they wanted a different layout, like literally formatting. So that can happen, but rarely.
I'm not as concerned about formatting as I am content.
Right, so I miss, there's all kinds of things that can happen, but usually after the sixty-three day review, it's like ninety, ninety-five percent buttoned up. If you have a page of edits, then you just discuss those at the public hearing and revise those by the time you have them fixed by the time you present it to the board for adoption. So that's how it normally works, I guess. Maybe you've just, maybe after you have your first workshop, it might, you might have a little bit better gauge on, on that. You might go through all the stuff and be like, we're pretty comfortable. Or you might say, oh my gosh, this took us three hours, we need another three hours. I will say, when we redid the master plan for the village of Benzonia, the planning commission. I think maybe they had two special meetings where they came in and met on a Saturday and went through it all. Maybe hour, hour and a half sessions a couple times. So. Well, I do something that.
I guess the questions to the commissioners are with Thanksgiving around the corner and Christmas holiday around the corner. Now, are we going to get, can we have at least one workshop before, you know, December fifteenth release of draft plan? And what time of day, what day of the week?
Uh, if you want a proposal for that, I would say the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at nine AM here. Throw that up. So that would be next week, I think the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth.
I won't be able to be here.
Still got to get your turkey. You can't be here the day before Thanksgiving because you're still, you're still going to get your turkey.
Five o'clock in the morning till probably six in the afternoon that day already, so. I've still got a job besides this one.
That particular.
Get laid. John, your thoughts? On what? When, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, nine AM?
I can't make that.
I don't know if John Frandler can make it. He's not here to say.
But that doesn't mean I won't be conducting my own workshop at home.
Do we have, do you have another suggestion? I just threw that out because I, I know I happen to be on leave that day.
I don't have a good day for this right now. Seriously, before Thanksgiving, no.
I, I would say I want to push it back to not release the draft plan, summer fifteenth meeting and release it January nineteenth meeting. Then you could, would have until at least like a week before January nineteenth to get me back comments. I would give you more.
We're releasing it to the board or releasing it to?
To the public, you're so, at your January nineteenth meeting.
So we're going to be looking at the current plan with these strategies and goals in mind. And we're going to be massaging, we're not going to be rewriting a master plan.
I, hopefully, hopefully, we're not going to be rewriting, but you know, I, I've given S- Sarah some feedback, but I, you know, I guess part of it, Sarah, is, you know, the way you want to handle it. Do you want five people sending you stuff that you have to put in a funnel and figure out? Or would you rather have us do a workshop?
In my experience. I almost never get five comments. I only ever get one or two people telling me stuff. If you guys all actually have comments to give me, that would be difficult, but I never had that happen before, honestly. Nobody ever gives me that many comments.
Unfortunately, you do such a good job. I think people rely on you to do their writing and.
So it's really up to you guys. If you think that you're going to have a ton of comments, then consolidating them would be awesome. I, I do a lot of master plans with a, I have a colleague that I do a lot of master plans. And we really have in the last like five years, we've had one township, Burgland Township that we just finished up. That did workshops and did consolidate comments. They had a lot of comments. They had an experienced planner on their planning commission, so he really did a deep dive into everything, which was awesome. But that rarely ever happens. Rarely, I rarely, rarely ever get comments back, so. If you guys don't have that many and it's just a couple people giving me a couple sentence comments here and there, I am totally happy with.
The purpose of the workshop would be for us to get on the same page about some things. And so I don't see where we would have five different opinions that way. We can consolidate and send it on. I just got to go through and get my head wrapped around this. This is a nice document. And this is going to help me tremendously and along with the existing plan that we have in place. And I'll go through each one of these and look at what we have in place. And eventually, we're going to get to the point where we either need to rewrite that, massage it or keep it. And we're just going to go through the whole plan. I don't know how else to do that. And so as a committee, we can have, do that during our, our normal meeting like this, but I, I, I just think it's going to take us quite a bit of time to get through that. I don't think you're going to get your stuff by the December meeting either. I just don't see us being able to move that quickly. I mean, there's so much to cover here.
It is a lot.
Part of the problem is you have a new member in May, you have two new members, well, two new member last month, new member this month.
No, it is, that's, that is some turnover.
Get some turnover.
This is a.
No one with more than a year.
Yeah. And no one with experience having done this before.
I mean, it's a good thing with a master plan. It's not like a park and rec plan. When you do a park and rec plan, you have a deadline. You guys are not under a strict deadline, so there's nothing pushing this. Unless you have a item that needs the backing of a master plan, like a moratorium. If you had a moratorium, then you would have a deadline that you needed to get the things wrapped up.
Directions that I'm going to be looking for is, you know, what's broken on the current plan, what do we need to fix? I mean, that's what I'm going after, right on the, right off the, right off the cuff to start. And then you take these goals and strategies and apply them into those areas. If it is deemed that we need to rewrite the whole plan, then we, we, we better get busy. It's a lot of work.
Technically speaking, we are rewriting the whole existing plan. My, my experience with it is, we adopted basically what we were living under with the joint planning commission. And that's plan wasn't necessarily put together particularly well.
Yeah, it was missing a lot of.
And how long ago was that done? Is that the current one that's in place?
Twenty twenty, yes, it was twenty twenty. It was worked on twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, because we knew that we were, we were ending a fifteen year, seventeen year joint commission. That was becoming more and more difficult to, to actually run. I mean, have a meeting here, have a meeting in Homestead, here, yeah, it was nuts. Who's, whose issues are what and who served out is just, so they separated. So in fact, we are rewriting the master plan that it currently exists. I think we have a much more thorough, in-depth, workable plan. You know, from the standpoint of getting together, you know, I, I'd be willing to meet on the twenty-sixth. Even if, but it depends on how many people meet, if there were three of us, we need to post the meeting, if it's just a couple of us. Actually, technically speaking, if I meet with you and then I meet with Ted, we're in violation of open meetings.
Right, because you're gonna take the information that we discussed and take it to Ted.
Or vice versa, you know, it just. You know, so we should have a, a meeting. And, you know, if everybody can't attend, you know, I can understand that if you can get, you know, thoughts to me, you know, knowing the meeting is coming.
Give me a December date and I'll be there.
Okay, or, or we'll give you the feedback of a November date, so I guess, you know. Other, other John is not here to, to weigh in, but if you guys wanna meet. You know, on the twenty-sixth, I'm happy to meet, if you guys wanna wait until December to meet, we can do that too, or we can do both.
I'm happy to meet.
Yeah, I, I guess I would go towards, let's do both.
Okay.
And, and come up with some December dates, because we wanna make sure that all of our board members are included in the conversations. I know I'm break open meetings act for sure.
Right, and I, I'm, you know, I'm gonna need some type of organization to this as well.
Yeah.
I'm not walking into a meeting and trying to review the entire plan at one time. I want it detailed and I want it sectioned out so that we can study, then come in and do our thing, or have written.
Yep.
Stuff done and, and that kind of thing, but it's, there's so much to cover. You have to do it in some kind of order, some kind of chronological order.
Otherwise, there are gonna be ten meetings and nothing's gonna get done.
Correct, exactly.
Which, which raises the point of, when we meet on the twenty-sixth at nine AM.
Great question.
Send us a whole bunch of stuff.
Perhaps, perhaps, you know, start putting together the organization. Of the meetings, of the agenda, you know, the organization of, let's do this section now, that section next week, section. And then we can all bone up on what's going on with those and then bring it to the table.
Let me put something out, I'll share it. Since it's agenda item, I take your feedback, oh, I think this is more important than, you know, and actually, the question for Sarah is. What, what sections do you need the most feedback on?
I was just gonna tell you, so if you look at the table of contents for the report, like chapters one through six. Kind of deal with data gathering, that's all, what, what's out there. What, this is all the stuff that we data gathered. And seven, eight, nine is the stuff that I gave you last month and this month. That's the vision, goals and objectives, strategies, the future land use plan. The zoning plan and the zoning recommendations and the action plan. So that's, if you were gonna only comment on one thing, seven, chapter seven, eight, nine would be the most important thing. To get your feedback on.
That work.
Yeah, to about those, that's fine, maybe.
You might need to reference some of these first chapters, weren't looking at it, but those are more for your reference. That's not. Um, well, you may have like formatting and grammatical things in those, that's kinda hard data, resolute things.
One of the things that I will comment on, as far as formatting and grammar. I don't think we need to. Meet in or spin wheels for it, if there's, if there's formatting and or grammar issues that you have, send them to Sarah. You know. Last time this was done, back in nineteen twenty, I can't tell you how many hours, actually, technically speaking, it was the ordinances. I need a comment here, this should be this word, I mean, it's just stuff that doesn't belong in meetings, you know.
Yeah, I, I will say, I, when I give you these monthly updates, I don't do deep dives into grammar and that. I do, I do have a person that I work with that will review all the grammar and all this up before I. Give you the final draft for the sixty-three day review, so. Just know that, that's kinda how, when I throw in this, all of this information in here, I, I don't do a deep dive on grammar and formatting the first time around.
That's probably what the sixty-three day review period is for.
Yes.
Like, that's when we've already come up with the draft, so then for sixty-three days, we get to go back through.
Analyze where commas go.
And analyze where commas go, and then those are little things.
Put you a favor and just stay out of that. You're much better.
For that. I was an editor for a newspaper in a former life, so that is something that I will probably get into, just because it's my nerd.
I'm so horrible at it.
This has been one of the greatest ads to this commission, deep talent, we rely on our tongue. Question for the webmaster, do we have all the Sarah's material, seven, eight, nine? I just wanna make sure that that material is available when we post the special meeting workshop.
Well, that would be stuff that I would post on the project website and it's already linked on the website, so people just, I haven't, I have not posted it yet. But I will post it after this meeting.
Perfect, just, I, I want it to be available, and if the public, I mean, it would be great if the public showed up to, you know, voice whatever opinion. I don't expect them to, I'll bring coffee. You know, it, it's. Again, trying to adhere to the open meetings act, you know, what are we talking about, this stuff? You know, so it's available to everyone.
Yeah, after this meeting, this is kinda like my final update of everything, I will get all of that on the website now, so.
Super.
The whole draft will be.
And I don't believe that I have access to the full. Comments, I, I think last month you mentioned there's a spreadsheet that.
The public comments.
The public comments that we've received so far, just trying to catch up on things. I don't think I have that.
I will resend that to everybody, just so I can make sure, because, yes, I. It's been sent out the last several ones, but I don't know who all has the.
Right.
I don't know how nerdy you wanna get, but I actually found a really easy to use stats package. That can, can do at least analysis of variance and provide a mean and standard deviation, if we wanna go that far on some of the things.
That's your kind of, that's your kind of nerd.
Oh, yeah. You know, and, and I'm split because it is going down there, but you, we have what, a hundred and fifty?
About, yeah.
You know, it's enough to get quasi statistically significant, but it's, it's really, you know. Basically, we need to take the survey result as pointing in the wrong direction, opposed to being. Everybody wants, well, no, just a bunch of people who responded wanted that.
Correct, yes, absolutely, just a guide, yeah.
But there, there are some that really do stand out, responses, that is.
Yes, yeah, it's almost the actual written responses are where you can get a lot of good info.
Well, this meeting is taking a lot longer than I had anticipated, is there anything else to discuss about the master plan?
That's all I had, um, what, I'll. I'll get everything on the website and resend public comments so that you guys.
Anybody else? Blight ordinance. I know Mike, you were checking other things from the last meeting, and I threw a bunch of things at, at the commission that. At the MTA conference, I ran into a guy from Castle County. That has been doing blight enforcement for twenty years, at one point, he had thirteen townships that he was working for. And I, I think probably as if, in some ways, more important than whatever ordinance we wind up with. The information that he passed along on, how, how to actually enforce whatever ordinance we have is. I thought it was really invaluable, I don't know that I understand it all. Because I'm not an attorney, or whatever, but just.
Well, whatever, whatever language we come up with, we'll have to go in front of the attorney for sure, make sure we do our due diligence, do it right.
Well, and as is the motion we made last, at the last planning commission to empower you to take the final draft to the attorney. So. And of the two A and B, B was the one that you favored.
Thank you, Sarah.
That one that you're.
Obviously not, well, Jim has presented me some other ones too, but. You know, there, there was, there was still some language out there that I think is necessary. You know, for instance, like, you know, the, the depth of grass, things like that. That's not gonna really fly in a real area like that to, no, so there's some things in there that should come out, but.
Well, the, the thing that I liked about the, and I, I just picked the two ordinances, he's cut us, cut way back to just doing two township and a village. You know, and I appreciate the stuff that you presented, but the ordinances that are in places have seen the eyes of attorneys and have, you know. Have. Been, been, well, obviously have been approved by their boards. Just one of the things that I learned a year ago at MTA conference, and, and our consultant, Manor Castaroson repeats every time that I, I see him. Don't reinvent the wheel, you know, steal, steal stuff from other townships that are happy with it, so that's, that's, that's why I passed that all along.
I read through them all.
So.
I made highlights for things.
I, I would again leave it up, up to you to, unless you need help from us.
You want me, you want me to write it? Or come up with a draft then, is that what you're saying?
That's what I thought happened at the last month's meeting, correct?
Well, I understood you guys were gonna come up with something that I was gonna take to the attorney.
So, so the motion. The motion read in the minutes that the final draft Mike would take two, and we had two drafts at that meeting.
Okay.
A and B.
Okay.
And. Which I think takeaway was, is that Mike has favored second over two. So I think if. Unless you're talking about, we look at all of them and marry them together. But motion last, last month was, of the two, Mike was gonna take the final that we chose to the attorney and have the attorney go through it.
Okay.
So we haven't chosen that yet, correct?
I don't, you know what, maybe we haven't, in my mind, I, Mike favored B, and I'm, he's the guy that has to enforce it.
Yeah, but I'm not favoring all the language that's on there, and of course, I'm not the planning commission, I'm not the one that puts that together, he's the one that has to enforce it. Correct, there was some, all of them need some addressing.
Correct, we had a look at it.
Yeah.
So. Would you wanna maybe just sit down and go through them together, and then maybe we can come up with something and then bring it back to the commission?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
A lot of blight?
Well, excuse me.
Do we have a lot of blight here? Depends on who you ask, and some, some areas, yes, not as bad as some other townships, but.
Okay.
There, there, there could be some policing for sure.
I think it's more that the current blight ordinance doesn't enable our zoning administrator.
Or any.
Gives him enough teeth to enforce it or, or make something happen. Basically, when it gets to a point, then he has to turn it over to the board.
We don't have a lot of language on anything, direction. And there never is in this area, I mean, people just kinda seem to just push it off, you gotta, you gotta have rules.
All right, well, I'll take that as a follow-up, you know, I can get together and then we can take all of them, the, the two that we had from last month, the two that. Jim brought forward, and we'll see what we can.
Find work.
Yeah, what, what you.
I can go through and, and. In my, my past knowledge, I can go through it and see what I think would be appropriate, honestly.
Well, and I think your example of grass is a good one, not appropriate.
There's a few, yeah, there's a few things that just don't, don't apply to us.
Yeah. So, all right, I'll, we'll take that, I'll take other.
Okay, bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else on blight?
Not as of right now.
Don't do it. New business, the administrative decision process. Again, that's something that's come up in front of the board and I don't know how much it's come up in front of this commission. But if you turn to. My takeaway report, page two. Basically stealing directly from the presentation. The four key players who have worked together in the zoning team. Just so it's clear with the township board, you know, who does what. Made sense to me, you know, I would make a motion that we adopt. This verbiage or, well, I make a motion that we adopt, adopt this verbiage as a recommendation to the board to adopt as a policy. So that it's clear. Who, you know, basically, who does what. You know, for, for an executive, effective zoning teamwork and transparent public process. If that makes sense. Page two.
Page two of the planning and. Enabling act.
No, 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 my take, my takeaway report from the. I wondered.
I mean, that sounds like reasonable definitions to me.
That's the way I remember them.
Yeah, I mean, it just feels like it should be a flow chart, I.
Yeah, I just stand on the way it's always been everywhere I've been.
Yeah. Yeah. I think if you don't have a second, the motion, motion dies.
You don't second?
You're good with not seconding?
Yes, I'm good with this.
So, so what is actually your motion?
My motion is to present this section of page two as a policy to adopt by the board. So we, I would present it to the board at the next board meeting as the way, way things handle, because my, my.
It's not handled this way now?
There's been a lot, from my experience on the planning commission earlier this year, um, who handles what? You know, should it go to the zoning administrator? Does, you know, to me, this clarifies it and, and just puts it in writing someplace so people can point to it.
Yeah, like I said, it feels like a flow chart, not a policy. I'm, I'm struggling on the board adopting a policy that says this is what the township does, and I think we all know that. The county, the C A.
I, I disagree. I don't think we do all know that.
I don't know that the policy is gonna change that.
Were you, did Ben ask you to come up with an administrative decision process to clarify it or?
Uh, we, we talked about it. He did not specifically ask me to do that, but that's part of the.